Good evening and welcome to the January eleventh, twenty twenty four, Town of Lake Luzerne zoning board of appeals meeting. Would you please all rise and recite the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, would you call the roll?
Kyla Droule.
Here.
Mike Bordeaux.
Here.
Ray Loubel.
Here.
And Palas.
Here. On this evening's agenda, we have the continuation of the second public hearing for area variance two zero two three A V dash five. James Morales and Suzanne Roberts, forty nine Valeria Drive, retaining wall variance for shoreline setback, length and height of retaining wall on the side yard setback. Public hearing two zero two three A V dash eight, Kenneth and Amy Smuck, twenty two Squire Circle, fence variance, good side of fences facing inward, not toward the neighboring property. New application, area variance two zero two three A V dash nine, Renee Elliott, forty four Harris Avenue, front yard fence height variance and front yard setback variance for ancillary structure. New application, area variance two zero two three A V dash ten, Terrence Dwyer, sixty seven Davern Drive, side yard setback variance for an addition to an existing building, acceptance of new additions from the zoning board meetings and new and all business. And at this point, I'm going to have to wait two minutes because the town public notice says that the continuation of the public hearing two zero two three from Mr. Morales will begin at seven oh five, and I cannot begin before seven oh five.
My phone says seven oh five.
Okay, well then, Mr. Morales, come up to the podium.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Nothing much has changed.
Uh, I know that I was there, so I know the answer to this, but tell us about your meeting with the Adronic Park Agency on December twenty first.
Well, they came back. In my mind, they wanted me to select a building option that they call non-jurisdictional. In other words, they didn't really want it to fall under A P A jurisdiction. But my engineer repeatedly tried to explain to them that the two options they gave us for that are not workable. And I'm not sure that they grasp that.
So, uh, when I was there with you and the A P A was there, they said they were going, did they provide you with the paperwork to apply for the the variance?
I got yesterday a pre-canned letter. That, no, there was no paperwork involved. I mean, I already downloaded the paperwork uh, myself way back when, September or something, and filled it out myself and gave it to my attorney, but they haven't provided me anything other than um a letter.
So at this point, is it your intention to go forward with a request for a variance from the Adronic Park Agency for for your current design?
Yes, I don't see any other way around it.
Uh, Mary, I have a question for you. Based on that, we're not going to get any further with where we are. Is it possible for us to table action on this until Mr. Morales gets an approval from A P A or a denial from A P A, rather than having Mr. Morales come every month?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to table action on this variance until Mr. Morales receives clarification from A P A.
I'll second that.
We'll all vote now.
Please.
Kyla?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Carry down the motion, carry.
Thank you, sir.
So do I just inform Karen when I've made it, when they've made a decision?
Yes.
Yeah, you need to continue to reach out to them. If you're going to do a variance, you've got to get that submitted and, but it um just keep me informed as you go along what's happening, basically.
Okay, I'll do that.
Is he going to talk about this? Like, is the clock ticking?
Well, because the public hearing is starting.
Okay.
That was one of the things we had to correct.
Yeah, it's the one I have to see in the file for enough.
No, no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Second item on the agenda is public hearing two zero two three A V dash eight, Kenneth and Amy Smuck, twenty two Squire Circle, fence variance, good side of fences facing inward, not toward the neighboring property. Mr. and Mrs. Smuck, would you come up to the podium, please? Karen, would you read the public notice?
Please take notice that pursuant to the zoning ordinance of the Town of Lake Luzerne, the zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing on January eleventh, twenty twenty four, seven oh five P M. At their regularly scheduled meeting, the meeting will be held at the municipal complex, five thirty nine Lake Avenue, Town of Lake Luzerne, to hear the hot comments on the following. Area variance twenty twenty three A V dash eight applicant Kenneth Smuck, owner Amy Smuck, parcel number two nine two point eleven dash one dash seven, Hamlet Residential Zone H R one point one two acres, location twenty two Squire Circle. The applicant has applied for variance from the zoning board of appeals for relief from the zoning ordinance of Lake Luzerne, Article six, general regula- regulations, fences, walls and retaining walls E, which states the finished side of the fence must face the neighboring property. The fence on this property has been installed with the finished side of the fence facing inward on the owner's property. A copy of the application as well as other supporting documentation are in file with the office of the zoning officer and may be reviewed by interested members of the public during normal business hours, Monday through Thursday, eight thirty A M. To one thirty P M. All parties in interest and citizens will be given an opportunity to be heard in respect to the proposed variance at the public hearing. Persons may respond by letter, email, appear in person, or by agent. Karen Putney, zoning officer, Town of Lake Luzerne, P O Box three seventy, five thirty nine Lake Avenue, Lake Luzerne, New York, one two eight four six, five one eight, six nine six, two seven one one, extension four, lake luzerne four at albany dot T W C B C dot com, published January fourth, twenty twenty four. I did receive one notice back in the mail that said it was unable to forward. It was addressed to Melissa Harvish, Havish, Harvish. And um, we were actually able to locate a phone number for her. We called and the phone number we have on file is the correct address. I don't know why it wasn't delivered, but I informed her of what the letter was about. And she had no comments other than that the variance did not affect her. So no comment from her. And other than that, I had received um, one email that was later redacted by the writer. And I had one other neighbor, Robert Johnson, come in asking questions about what the variance was about, but he left no comment either for or against the variance. I told him he could come to the meeting if he wished to make any further comments.
Thank you. Uh, I understand that this is seeker exempt, county planning is not required, A P A is not non-jurisdictional. That all correct?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public meeting for area variance two zero two three A V dash eight. Mr. and Mrs. Smuck.
Yes, good evening. We're back again.
Tell us about your variance request.
Um, go over what we did last meeting or pretty much?
Pretty much.
Okay. Um, basically, uh, I can start, I guess, with the fence, um, work back from there or uh, we applied for, went to Karen, applied for a permit for a fence. Uh, she went through all everything with us and she said to talk to the neighbor, talk to the neighbors about it uh, before you did it. We went and spoke with uh, Lee, the neighbor, and we told him what we were going to be doing. Actually, the day I spoke with him, I had a surveyor on the property. He was re-surveying the property line. And at that time, Lee was there and my wife, uh, myself and the surveyor and Lee. And I explained to him that we're going to put the fence up. He'll have the finished side on his side of the property. Uh, we're going to be off the property, off the property line roughly about a foot. Uh, went over the whole thing and I said, we're, you know, we're going to put a nice looking fence up. I explained what it looked like. I showed him a picture of it. Said he had no problem with it or whatever. Go ahead. So at that point, uh, we came, went into Secaring at the zoning office, applied for the permit. Uh, she told us what we had to do, got all the paperwork done. And at that point, we contacted the defense company to come back, uh, which we already had some prices. And we got a set date from him, told him, you know, we've got the permit. Here's the permit. Fence has to be installed towards the neighbors. Everything was all, all the ducks were in a line, ready to go. And the day of the fence, uh, it was, I think, October eighteenth, I believe. Um, at that time, oh, November eighteenth, I'm sorry, I'm a month off. Uh, November eighteenth, at about eight o'clock in the morning, fence company showed up, the two trucks and the trailer. They first started installing the fence and they started to put up the first piece of fence with the finished side towards the neighbor as what they were already told at that time. Uh, our neighbor came out and said, no, no, no. He says, I don't want it there and this and that. He says, I don't want anybody on my property. Uh, I don't want the finished side of my property. He said, put it on your side. I don't care where it goes. He says, I just don't want anybody, and I don't want the fence facing my side, and I want anybody on my property. He said, I know if it's going to be facing my side, you're going to have to come over and finish and maintain it. And I said, Lee, I'm still going to have to maintain both sides of the fence, not one side. He said, I don't care. He goes, I don't want the finished side of my fence. So the fence guy said, well, we'll do whatever you want. And at that point, you know, uh, it's, there's actually four sign affidavits from both of the fence guys pertaining to what I just told you. Uh, they signed them and they're in the uh, in the application also. Uh, one for my wife, one for myself, one from each one of the two fence guys. Those four affidavits. And at that point, uh, it was on a Saturday morning, or else I would have went into Karen's office, spoke with her about it. And I said, well, what if we postpone it? He said, you're probably looking at spring. And at this point, uh, you know, we were kind of under the gun because previously we had a lot of altercations with the neighbors. Uh, they were dumping stuff on our property. Uh, they were trespassing numerous different things. So in order to put the flame out, basically, I said, go ahead and install it. And we'll go into Karen's office Monday morning, apply for the variance. And basically, since the fence has been up, we haven't really had any altercations or anything whatsoever with the neighbors. It's been calm. It's been quiet. Uh, no problems at all. So basically, prior to this, uh, we purchased the property a couple of years ago, and at that point, and at that point, uh, when we first met the neighbors, they seemed fine, no problem at all. And then it just got, every time we pulled in the driveway, they were dumping uh, their trash, their branches, their leaves, potted plants, all kinds of stuff. They were dumping it over the hill on the back of our property. We asked them not to. And actually, on this one, wasn't in there, but all this stuff was on our property, over the property line. So there's canoes, kayaks, that was the only picture that was left out. I don't know if you want to see this or not, or. So this is what basically prompted us to go forward with moving the fence, but we put up with it for a couple of years and, but a few months ago, and I think it was October, October fourth, uh, hit an altercation uh, with Lee on the property and he got very vulgar, very threatening towards me. Um, and basically, well, there's even an apology letter in the application that he sent to me. But I talked to him after he sent the letter. I said, leave, we can move forward. I said, I'm more than happy to go on with it.
Not sure this has much to do with the fence.
Well, it's leading up to why we went ahead to do the fence as as far as that goes.
Just installation of the fence or why the fence was facing the way that it was facing?
Can I interrupt for a second? So when he said, don't set one inch on my property, don't walk one inch on my property. And when he came out and had changed his mind on November eighteenth, he didn't want the finished side towards him. Then we remembered, he said, before, don't come one inch on my property.
Or you'll see what's going to happen.
So we were very nervous to go against what he was saying. We we were very nervous that he would get angry or what he would do. We didn't know. So that's why we were intimidated kind of to not put the finished side.
And this way, pretty much at that point, we just went ahead. We got it installed and you know, that's pretty much, I mean, I also, you know, have a police report of the same day and that, but.
It's not relevant to this.
Okay, but I mean, that's basically what led up to us getting the fence done at that point.
That is also not the question here.
Okay. No, I mean.
Is there anything additional?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything additional?
Uh, we're also in the, they also know that we're in a process of we're going to get any of the garage installed, which there's limited amount of space. We have a camper, uh, which we were going to put the camper between the garage and where the fence is. Now, if we move the fence over a few feet or whatever in order to to get the bullseye of the fence, then our space is going to be limited.
That is also not relevant to this issue.
Well, we'd be against zoning laws because Karen already told us we had to move the camper off the property immediately. We have no place to park it. That's what we're trying to establish as far as reasonable space that we can utilize the space that we have, so.
Um.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue in the audience?
We have neighbors here from both sides of our property. Uh, you know, they don't have any issues with the fence as far as that goes and, you know, the way it sits right now, as far as that goes. But.
Anyone?
Yeah, you know, I'm Ken's neighbor to the left.
Mr. Hannah, please come up to the podium and speak into the microphone. This is all recorded.
My name's Kevin Hannah. I live to the left side of Ken and Amy, and I think the fence looks great the way it is. Given the situation that they're in, and now that everything has calmed down on there, um, I think, you know, Ken had to do what he had to do to keep the peace. I think the neighbors were threatening Amy with vulgar language. I could hear them yelling from my house at these guys. You know, Barb and Lee have never had a problem with me. I don't and I don't know what goes on with these guys, but you know, Ken spent a lot of money to put a fence up to eliminate, you know, the trouble with the neighbor. So for them to try to move the fence or even try to maintain the fence from the other side, or even try to finish the other side, I think it'd be a big problem because Lee's not going to let him on the property to do anything. But from my perspective, I don't see anything wrong with the fence the way it looks from my house. I were driving by it every day.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Tiffany Hunter, twelve Squire Circle. So I'm on the other side of the um fence, so I see the unfinished side. Um, and I think it looks great. The fence looks great. Um, I can concur that um, you know, Lee and Barb are problematic. I had issues with them as well when I, when I came in. Um, and I think they're going to continue to be an issue, but um, the fence itself, I think, looks great. It's very high quality, very well done. And uh, personally, I think should stay the way that it is.
Thank you. Anyone else? I make a motion to close public hearing area variance two zero two three A V dash five, James, excuse me, A V dash eight, two zero two three A V dash eight, Amy and Ken Smuck.
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carry down the motion, carry.
So let us get into the application. I'm going to skip over to the history of the property. Uh, I don't think there's anything to question about the history of the property. It was, it was purchased by Amy Smuck in twenty twenty one. Uh, the proposed action received variance from unfinished side offense to face request is to receive a variance for unfinished side offense to face neighbor at neighbor's request. Uh, Karen has informed me that Mr. and Mrs. Smuck did everything properly, went to her office, got the land use application, was, were given all the rules and regulations about where the fence could be, how the fence had to be maintained, that there was no property setback. It could be guns on the property line, providing you could maintain both sides of it. Um, all of that was done. Um, and then the fence was installed backward for our regulations. Um, we are not here to discuss any issues with uh, the Smucks and their neighbors. That is not our job here. Our job is to see if they are in compliance with the rules and regulations and if they should be allowed a variance. We'll go through our standard as always. Question number one, describe how the requested variance will not alter the character of the larger neighborhood or impact the adjacent properties. Response to the defense's ward and the permit was granted for the fence. The finished side is on my side of the request of my neighbor. Um, neighbors don't get to decide zoning regulations. The zoning regulations are the zoning regulations. The zoning regulations were explained to the Smucks and they decided themselves to install it in the opposite direction. Ray?
I agree, but there's always, you know, there's always situations that arise. You know? Yeah, we just, we have to look at this, in my opinion, at a human perspective. But the question's answered.
Uh, it's not a question whether the question is answered. We decided that at the previous meeting. This is, is what the, will alter the character of the larger neighborhood.
Yeah.
Well, I I disagree with that in the sense that currently, I believe it's the Mitchells live next door, Lee Mitchell, is that correct? Uh, Mitchells live next door, and they may be happy with the unfinished side being facing them, but if they sell the property, the variance goes with the property. So the next neighbor coming in may not be happy with the fence facing backwards.
Correct. Now, a variance stays with the property for life, right?
Correct.
Is it possible to grant a variance for the lifetime of that fence? Or is that a gray area? Because the fence is going to last, oh, the fence is going to last ten years.
I, I've seen it the last time. It's not going to last forever, but.
Well, so it would be a new fence and have to be a new application.
Okay.
Mike?
All right, uh.
Right, you would have to issue a new comment.
They can repair it, but if they replaced it, it would be a new permit.
Yeah, so it is essentially for the life of the fence.
For the life of the property. So if we, we grant the variance, does it stick with the property forever?
Well, it sticks with the fence. Like, I understand if the fence stays on the property, it would, but the minute they replace, someone replaces the fence, they'd need a new permit and it would be a new a new, I don't want to say application, because if the person installs it the correct way, they wouldn't have to get a variance.
Correct. All right. It wouldn't be able to replace it in kind, whether it is?
I don't know. I asked, that's my question to Karen.
No, they wouldn't be able to replace it in kind because um because it's a new fence and because of the variance, at that point, it would have to be installed correctly.
All right. Mike?
Um, I, I feel that yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to say that, you know, I feel that it's a, you know, obviously the fence is against the regulations, but with the fence being up, that.
Now, just for, we did not take into account that the structure is already there.
Yep. Um, that's true. All right. So I'm, I'm going to say, really, I know this is not what we're doing right now, but I have no further questions. I feel that my questions were answered with what Ray asked, like if the fence would be a lifetime variance or if it just stays in perpetuity with the fence, like once the fence is replaced. So I really have nothing more that I feel to add to this with his question being answered.
Kayla?
I agree.
You agree with?
No, no further questions. Does it alter the character of the neighborhood? That's what you're trying to answer.
Right.
I believe it does not.
Thank you. Question number two, describe what alternatives have been explored to achieve a solution other than variance. The response is, I asked my neighbor to put the finished side of the fence on his side and he said no on the day of the installation, eleven eighteen twenty three, he'd agreed prior on ten twenty five twenty three.
Um, Matt, don't forget that they submitted additional information.
Yep.
And that needs to be read in as well. I have mine here. Do you want it?
Yes, please. Thank you. Well, for this one, there is the neighbor requested that the unfinished side of the fence be on the okay, this is three and five. I saw, there's nothing additional for question number two. The uh, I guess the alternative is to put it up correctly as opposed to putting it up one hundred and eighty degrees out. Ray? No.
Can I add anything or is it?
No.
Can I let, let me speed for a second?
No.
I think alternatives were explored. I mean, it started with the right intention, but ended up wrong. Probably not enough alternative were explored. But
Mike?
Um, I feel that alternatives were explored, but w- once again, the, the alternative is to rotate it to one hundred and eighty degrees and have it the correct way and then the variance is not needed.
Kayla?
I believe that the alternatives were explored. I'm questioning um, can it not just be finished on the other side as well? Both sides be finished?
Put up a double fence?
Maybe not double the fence, but just a finished siding on the you know, side.
So that is an option.
Double, double fence up. Yeah, well, see you later.
All right, thank you. Explain whether this requested variance is substantial. Response is the finished side is on my side versus the neighbor's side. In addition to that, that the neighbor requested the unfinished side of the fence to be on. No, I'm just, I understand that, but I'm, I'm working at the, at, at the uh, uh, there's additional information here. The fence cannot be moved three feet in or more because of, uh, to put a finished side facing the neighbor because they have a plan for a thirty foot wide garage to be built, a plan to park a camper on the south side of the garage and the fence. You need to have the camper ten feet off the fence line. Um,
Can I state just for the record that the the um, if it's a detached garage that you're talking about, it needs to be ten feet from a property line, not a fence line. It's the property line, not the fence line.
Pardon?
It's attached, will be attached.
Okay, and you're in the H R zone?
Yes, we went over this with people before. And we said it could be, uh, ten foot, I'm sorry. It could be.
It has to be ten foot off that property line where the fence is located. And we have, what we're doing is we're putting a breezeway through because in order to get like, you know, propane or fuel oil deliveries behind the house, so they have a breezeway to walk through and, and to make, and to access it.
In the H R zone, one property line, one side has to be at least ten feet from the property line and the, and they have to have a total of thirty for both. So the house, the setback on the other side of the house is more than twenty feet. So they just have to be ten feet from the property line on the side where they're planning on putting the garage. It's not measured from the fence. It's measured from the property line. Fence can encro- encroach on that.
But to Mary's point. But to Mary's point, this, this is all really rather moot. Because the question is, i- i- is the variance substantial? And the answer is yes, the variance is substantial. It's a hundred and eighty degrees out. Rail?
The variance is substantial.
Mike?
Yep, the variance is substantial.
Kayla? Question number four, describe how the requested variance will not have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions of their neighborhood. Response is fences wooden blends in with the surroundings. That is true, it is just put in backwards. Rail?
I don't see any terrible. Impact on the environment or the neighborhood.
Mike?
I, with a wooden fence, I do not see any impact on. Environment or neighborhood.
Kayla?
I agree, no impact.
Question number five, describe how the requested variance does not itself create a difficulty. Response is the finished side on my side will not, will keep the maintenance of the fence on my side. In addition to that, the threat of the neighbor to not step one inch on his property or build or maintain a fence. Variance is needed to provide enough room for a two-car garage with camper parking and enough room between the camper and the fence. Ten feet, no other parking is found to be within zoning requirements to the camper. The septic distribution box, the leach field present. Leach field present parking on the north side of the house. That being read into the record, this is absolutely a self-created difficulty. Rail?
It's self-created because you wanted it.
Mike?
Uh, self-created difficulty.
Kayla?
Self-created difficulty.
Matt, I have something to contribute, uh, that last comment about keeping the RV. Between the fence and the proposed or future structure there. You have to keep an RV ten feet from the property line itself. Is that right, Karen?
That's correct.
Yep. So unless there's a twenty-foot separation between the proposed garage and the property line, that might be an issue.
Yes, the garage is being set back from the house. Once it's set back from the house, there's thirty some odd foot, so we got ten foot for the fence and another twenty foot. To bring the camper in. If we move the fence over, it's gonna be like threading a needle to try to get the camper alongside the garage. We can't put it in front because obviously can't put a camper in front of the property. And we can't go on the left side because the left side is where the, uh, the leach field is. The rear of the house is where the septic tank is. The only place is on the driveway side. And that's why we have the fence up to determine the exact point of, of the, of the property line. And the garage is at the other, the other area, so we have two sides where. The only place we're gonna be able to park anything.
Have you considered putting in a smaller garage?
Uh, yeah, we don't.
I understand you had this wish list. Right. Um, I, I don't understand how. You locate in the fence where. A hundred and eighty degrees out backwards. Uh, is going to, to allow you to better maintain the fence since you have to maintain both sides of the fence. Whether it's on the property line, a foot from the property line, three feet from the property line, ten feet from the property line. You have to maintain both sides of the fence, so that line of logic just does not fly with me.
Well, we, we're, I'm, I'm more than happy, I talked to the neighbor originally and. He was ecstatic, it was fine. I mean, he was happy with where we were doing it and I had all intensive purposes of installing the fence the correct way. So, I mean.
We are not here to discuss your relationship with your neighbor.
Right. Okay. I mean, I, like even said, sir, I mean, I'll be more than happy to fence the whole other side of the fence, that's what it takes. I just. I, you know, as far as moving it one way or the other, I mean, that's just kinda.
Fencing the, uh, installing a double fence with the good side on the, on the. Facing the neighbors would be an acceptable solution, so not correct.
I mean, yes.
It's acceptable, but how are they going to install it without go, if they're saying they have a problem or?
They would have to get their neighbor's approval.
Correct.
To go on the property.
The fence is not on the property line, right?
No, it's.
No.
It's only about, about a foot, twelve to eighteen inches off. And there's trees on both sides of the fence, so.
Does anyone else have any questions on the board?
And I know we can't make everybody happy, we're just trying to find a, a reasonable solution to this, so we can wa- move on with our lives and. You know, get this resolved.
I make a motion to approve area variance two zero two three A V dash eight.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Matt?
No. It does.
What exactly?
You just got a variance.
Thank you, sir.
I did talk to Karen.
There's too many A's and O's and back and forth. I gotta go outside and freeze this wet. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
No.
No.
Thank you.
Next item is new application area variant two zero two three A V dash nine Renee Elliott forty-four Harris Avenue. Front yard fence height variance and front yard setback variance for ancillary structure. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, tell us about your variance application.
Okay, well, when we purchased the house last January, the fence was already there. And when I applied for an Airbnb. I found out that, I guess, six-foot fences aren't allowed and. Then I found out I also have two front yards, which I never heard of, so I was told that we need to cut the fence to four feet. So then we put in for the variance. And we also wanna get a shed, cuz there's like a little shed attached to the house, which isn't really big. So, that's why we're here.
This property. Is between Harris Avenue and East River Drive, giving it two streets, it borders two streets, which creates two front yards. The fence that they're talking about borders is along the East River Drive side, which is not their driveway side of their house. Their driveway side is on Harris Avenue. Not knowing that it was considered to have two front yards. Of course, they didn't know the fence, was that fence there when you bought it?
Yeah, it was there already.
Yeah, and, and the fence was put in with no permit. And, um, we've looked back through Google and it appears as though it was put in sometime in two thousand and eighteen. Yeah. So, anyway, that fence is six feet high along the East River Drive side when. In doing the short-term rental stuff, we, one of the things that Chris is. Um, do, having to do under the local law is to look and see if there's any violations on the property, and this is one of the things that came up. Fence is there, the storage building is not there, but again, you have to look at these as though it was not there, but, so they're, the. They either have to remove the fence or cut it down to four feet or ask for a variance, those are theirs.
But is, but is there like a law that, um, you're not allowed to have a six-foot fence, cuz there's a lot of them?
You can have a six-foot fence on your side, property line and rear property line, but you don't have a rear, you have two fronts and two sides.
But there's a lot of people like on the street that have these six-foot fences. So.
Yeah, and I don't know when they were put in and I've only been on the job since the end of two thousand and eighteen.
So, I mean, like, so. You only knew about ours cuz we applied for the Airbnb.
That's right.
So they're asking for two variances.
Yeah, one for, one for the fence to keep it at six feet.
And then one for a shed.
And one's for a shed.
A front yard setback for the shed, which. To them is in their backyard, but it's on the East River Drive side of the property, it's within the front yard setback of that. Property.
And we wanna put it near the, near that fence.
Has everyone had an opportunity to review the application? I have reviewed the application, I have been to the property. I believe the application is complete. I would like to see, uh. Two things added to the application. Uh, one is a design for the shed that you're building. Now, you state it's gonna be twelve by twelve and it's gonna be eight feet si- eight-foot sidewalls. We need more detail than that as to what the structure you're proposing, especially since you're proposing putting it within the front yard setback distance. And the other thing is the location of your leach field, which. You say you cannot put the shed on the other side of the property because of the leach field. You show the septic, but the drawing does not show the leach field, so I would like to see a specific design. For the shed that you're proposing and sp- and the location of the leach field added to the application.
Is, is it good enough to say that, I mean, the siding is going to be like board and batten with a, with a metal roof?
I need, I need specifics as to the, the. Dimensions of the, of the building, the height, the height of, I have an, I have a, it's twelve by twelve and an eight-foot sidewall. I have no dimensions for the height of the building.
Well, twelve by twelve is twelve feet wide.
There's no dimension for the peak of the building.
Okay, so the sidewall, okay, so you need a peak.
I need specific information as to the structure you are proposing to build for this variance.
Well, I'm just asking what, what are those specifications that you need and.
Just a quick drawing that'll show the building and I think you're looking for maximum height.
Right, I'm looking for, I'm looking for elevations.
What's, what's the maximum height that's allowed to the shed?
From the ground.
To the peak, yes. And what, what is the?
That's what he's asking.
But if it, isn't it a hundred, like, we don't need a permit if it's a hundred and forty-four feet, right?
Right, I thought there wasn't a permit if you had, if it was a hundred and forty-four feet.
You are also asking that it be put within the front yard setback. So you're asking for a variance located.
You do need.
closer to the property line than, than is allowed by, by the current zoning regulations, so.
Right.
I would like to know how tall that building is that you're proposing to put within that area.
And I'm just asking what, what is the maximum height allowed?
It's, it is eighteen feet or the height of your house, whichever is less from, from ground to peak.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem.
And just so that you're aware, you do need a permit for a shed that is less than a hundred and forty-four square feet, as well as one larger. You, you don't need a permit with Warren County for the, for the, for anything less than a hundred and forty-four square feet, but with the town, you need. A permit for either shed. Just, I just want you to make sure that you understand that.
Okay.
So, I make a motion to accept this application as complete contingent upon receipt of. The location of the septic system. And specific drawings as to the design of the proposed structure, storage structure. Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, there could be a drywell there, we don't know, it's basically the treatment system, pardon, of, component of the septic. So it could be a, could be a seepage pit or it could be a leach field, we don't know.
Okay, but then, then, then I need to know. What exactly there is, because if it's, if it's a drywell. Then there's no concern about traveling over a leach field and the, and the shed could be put on the other side of the building. So, I need to know what, what your septic system is. If it's a drywell or a leach field, where it's located, and the specifics as to the structure you're proposing to build.
So we have, does that septic guy come back for the third time?
He already came out twice already.
Well, if he's been there, you might be able to just call him and ask him. If it is drywells or if it's say an absorption field and could he tell you the specifics of it, so that you can draw it out on your plan.
Okay.
But you're not gonna need a, a plan from him or something that's stating it?
No.
To, for this short-term rental, yes, but it doesn't.
But I didn't know, maybe it said it on them.
No.
That required that they locate it, just that it's a combination system.
Yeah, first we got the size, the first time, we didn't know how big it was. Okay.
There's a couple variances here.
Yes. There is a, a, a variance for the height of the fence. There is a variance for the locating the ancillary structure in the front yard, since they don't have two.
So we should have somewhere on the application like A, B, C, D. With the specific variance requested, right?
Well, on your cover sheet, it gives you both variances that you're looking for.
Alright, real quick, Matt just made a motion. Did anyone second that?
No, they have not.
Second that motion.
Okay. Matt, you wanna roll call vote?
Please.
Kayla?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Hearing on motion, Karen.
I gotta look at my calendar. When's our next meeting? Make a motion to establish a public hearing for area variance. Lost it. Two zero two three A V dash nine on February eighth at seven oh five P M. Contingent upon receipt of the information requested.
Alright, could I just say something in a minute? Um, I might not be able to travel here though. Cuz we don't live here, I'm having surgery on the first, so I don't think I can be here that day.
I can establish a public hearing in March. I can establish one in April.
March would be better.
Alright. Now, we're really.
March seventh.
Thank you. Motion to establish a public hearing on March seven at seven oh five P M for area variance two zero two three A V dash nine. Renee Elliott forty-four Harris Avenue, front yard fence height variance and front yard setback variance for ancillary structure. Contingent upon receiving the information requested for the. Septic system and details for the structure which is being built.
I'll second that. Roll call vote?
Please.
Kayla?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Hearing none, the moment, Karen.
Thank you.
Now, do you guys understand the exact, like, the details of what he's looking for?
Yeah, so we have to, we're gonna talk to the septic guy and then he's gonna, he's my growing guy. No, he owns it with me, so.
I just wanted to make sure you, you kinda knew what we were asking for before you had it out.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll talk to, I'll call the septic guy again and then we'll, but the fence will be discussed again at that time also.
Yes, the whole variance will be.
The whole variance, okay.
And we want separation of the, the septic system to the proposed shed on this.
You mean, you mean the distance from the leach field to the shed?
I wanna, I wanna know where the, where the, if.
If we have a.
Where, where the leach field is if they have one, and if they don't, I wanna know where the drywell is.
Okay.
We're gonna know that by.
Whatever.
Dwelling or sticking a pole in the ground.
They'll have to put it on their plan.
Right.
Or modify the plan that I said in, with the location of the.
Great. So we'll just submit that to you then, Karen?
Yeah, you can just set, submit it by email to me.
Okay. Alright.
I'll probably forward it on to Matt to make sure it's got what he needs, but, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is new application area variance two zero two three A V dash ten Terrence Dwyer sixty-seven Devon Drive. Side yard setback variance in addition to an existing building. Mister Dwyer?
Hey.
Welcome. So. You probably heard this before, so tell us about your various request.
Uh, the property is a barn, I use it for storage. Uh, it's underwater by, between twelve. Uh, it's underwater by between twelve and three feet twice a year. So anything in the barn just rises up and the barn contains it all. Chainsaws, lawn mowers, everything, et cetera. So I went to the property line. I guess there's an easement that runs behind the property and all the way down Davern Drive. It's not maintained, so whenever the water comes up, all the garbage comes and ends between myself and rice. I just, what started as a fence line, not really to be a fence, but more to retain the property cuz it was undermining the foundation to the barn. Wanted to put a little uh. Barrier there, which eventually turned into a carport. I connected it to the roof. Uh, I kept the original structure, uh, fourteen inches off of the property line. Great friends with the, everyone's good. Uh. I guess I made a mistake of working without a permit. And it turns out that my setback for what is now a carport. Uh, is not within. The uh. What it's supposed to be.
Okay.
You know, just last three, two weeks ago, the property is, it's almost useless cuz it's underwater so often. My firewood goes down the block. Everyone's collecting firewood when the water goes down. It's all good, no complaints. Everybody's good, but uh. You know, if I have to take it down, I gotta take it down. I don't think it hurts anybody, um, but I gotta abide by the law, so whatever you guys say, I gotta do.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the application? Um, I believe the application is complete. Does anyone disagree with that? Make a motion to accept the application for area variance two zero two three A V dash ten Terrence Dwyer, sixty-seven Davern Drive, side yard setback variance for an addition to existing building.
I will second that motion.
Roll call vote, Matt?
Please.
Kayla?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Hearing none, that motion's carried.
Make a motion to establish a public hearing for area variance two zero two three A V dash ten on February eighth at seven oh five P M.
I will.
Mike.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Please.
Kayla?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rail?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Hearing none, motion's carried.
Thank you.
Is there anything I need to do before the hearing?
Hmm, I don't believe so. Karen, you have everything you need, right?
Everything I need.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Stay calm.
Next item on the agenda is accepting the minutes in the zoning board meetings. Uh, we have minutes for. No, I hadn't, sorry.
You're in your packet.
For the December meeting and the. Just the December meeting. Have you had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three zoning board of appeals, appeals meeting?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Hearing none, motion's carried.
New business. I'd like to welcome Kayla as an official member of the zoning board of appeals since the uh, the town board. Um, has. Moved her into that position. Uh, that's a good thing. Bad thing is Jamie Moore has retired from the zoning board of appeals. And uh. To me, that's a, that is a, that's a loss to us. He was a very valuable asset. Um. I did my best to get him to stay on. Gene did his best to get him to stay on, but Jamie's been on the, on the zoning board, I think he said for ten years, so. He's decided he, for some strange reason, he wants to spend more time with his grandchildren. So, anyway, um. I don't have anything additional under new or old business, Rail?
No new business for me.
Mike?
Nope.
Kayla? Karen?
No, I'm fine.
Chris?
No, sir, I'm good.
Mary? Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.